Welcome to the regular scheduled meeting of the Common Council for the City of Hudson for Monday, April 22nd. I'd like to call the meeting to order and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on a nation of their back, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Virchill.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Yakub.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, Teewinkle.
Here.
District Five, Hoggatt.
Here.
And six, Vanslo.
Here. At this point in our agenda, we ask any citizen present that would like to speak to the council on any item that's not on the agenda. So if there's any citizen here that would like to speak to the council, now is the time. Come to the podium and state your name and anything you'd like to say. We're open for suggestions and comments. I'll ask one more time if anyone's here that would like to speak to the council, but it doesn't look like there is, so we'll move on to consent agenda items.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of April 8th, 2013, and the organizational meeting minutes of April 16th, 2013, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $420,170.17, a detailed description is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of 20 regular operator licenses for the period April 23rd, 2013 through June 30th, 2015, and to approve the issuance of one temporary operator's license to be used July 3rd through 6th, 2013 at the Hudson Booster Days event in Lakefront Park. Additional operator license application information is available in the Clerk's office on request. To approve the Stipe Shows Carnival to be held May 9th through 12th, 2013 in the Plaza 94 outer parking lot contingent on receipt of written permission issued by Kraus Anderson, proof of liability insurance, and issuance of a direct seller's permit. To approve the request to amend the alcohol premises description on the liquor license for the Postmark Grill, 225 Locust Street, to include the outside patio area contingent on approval by the Building Inspector, Fire Inspector, and Police Chief, payment of any outstanding debt, payment of $1,232.50 for the additional sewer connection fee, and surrender of the current liquor license. To approve the request to amend the liquor premises description on the liquor license for Azul Tequila Incorporated, 2421 Hanley Road, Suite 100, to include the open patio area south side of the building contingent on approval by the Building Inspector and Fire Inspector, payment of any additional sewer connection fee proceeding of 28 people, and surrender of the current liquor license. To place on file the quarterly reports of the Police Chief, Fire Chief, and Building Inspector, and the monthly report of the Finance Officer, and the April 9th, 2013 minutes of the public utility admission. That is all.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Yakub?
Yes.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Teewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Okay, application of the Trio Group LLC for a Class B beer and liquor license for the establishment at 517 Second Street, Hudson, Wisconsin. This is the old Dibbo's license. There's not a reserve fee on this because the license was issued before 1985?
Eighty-seven.
Mr. Anthony De Bruzy is here. If he had want to come up, Mr. De Bruzy, and for any of the folks that have any questions for him. He's quite confident that the remodeling will be completed by the 90-day period. Any questions?
Well, move for approval on condition of staff recommendations.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions?
Ninety days, so when are you going to open?
I'm sorry?
When are you going to plan to open?
We plan to open June 28th.
Wow, cool.
Today, here earlier, he said 20. He's already started putting up sheet rock walls already.
We got our first sheet rock, sheet rock wall up today.
Say that quickly, huh?
Yeah.
So, to what extent is this first phase? Is it just the front half of the bottom?
Yeah, so the first phase actually takes all of the abatement, any environmental concerns, cleans the basements, and then the front half of the lower level. And that will be what's operating initially, is the front half of the lower level.
Do we have a name yet, or are you going to announce that later?
Not yet.
Okay. Any other questions or any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item is a proposal from Park Board by Zami Schwartz for Eagle Scout Project in Prospect Park.
I don't know that he's here.
Everyone had a chance to review that. I believe the recommendation came from Park Board to approve. Looks like it's going to be a really, it's a nice sign project.
We just put it on the agenda in case he was here and wanted to talk about it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Okay, is there a second? Is Mr. Schwartz here? Okay, so usually we like to get him to make the presentation in front of us, but he's not here tonight, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider proposed changes to municipal code 181-12 and 181-14 and other sections relating to the city boat mooring policy ordinance number 1-13.
These are the changes that implement the decision a couple meetings ago to go with the dinghy on the Dyke storage option that was approved by the Park Board and Public Works and the council. You've got an ordinance, ordinance-1-13, that simply refers to that, and 181-12D1 refers, exempts the dinghy storage people from the no parking on the Dyke Road. And as a part of this, the Park Board went through the existing mooring policies and kind of put some things in the ordinance and some things in the policy, updated them, and that's the purpose of that ordinance. For example, the liability provision was updated and just a provision allowing them to adopt additional rules subject to council approval. So, on the ordinance, if you want to adopt it today, you'd need to suspend the rules. Oh, and also on your packet is the waiver of liability that was part of that policy change. On the policies, you don't need to suspend the rules. These are, they, the idea was to put things in the policies that can be changed easily without going through a whole ordinance review and publication and that sort of thing. It would still be subject to council approval, but it just allows some of the operational stuff to be adjusted as the Park Board deems fit and subject to council approval. Do you have anything to add, Kirk, on that?
I don't.
Anyone feel the urge to suspend the rules and we adopt it tonight?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. I think we need a roll call.
Yeah.
Roll call vote, please.
Vanslo?
Yes.
Hoggatt?
Yes.
Teewinkle?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Morsette?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Is there a motion to approve ordinance number 1-13?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 1-13.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Is this, how long is this? Is this a one-year contract? I don't see that. Do we have any?
No, it's not.
It's nothing, it's just an ordinance?
Yeah, it's just an ordinance.
Are we going to, is there any, are we going to be revisiting this?
That's up to the council, I mean.
What's your question, Mary?
Well, I thought that when we discussed it the last time, we thought we'd revisit it.
And then you would just have to change it.
After we, yeah.
If there were changes made, then you'd have to change your ordinance.
Yep.
To something else.
Okay. That's.
But also, I'm sorry. Go ahead. In order to implement the changes that were approved.
Yeah, right. You need an ordinance. Yeah, I know, I just didn't know if we were putting that in there or not, but I guess we never really do that. We just try to remember, which is.
Okay. Any other questions? We don't have a motion to approve it. Yeah, we do, and a second. Any other questions? I can't believe there's not more questions on this particular, oh, be quiet, yeah, don't. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
And then you want to approve the
Revisions?
The policies. That's the document titled Boat Mooring Area Rules, Policies, Procedures for 2013. And this goes out with the packet, the application and everything, to the existing mooring permit holders, and if there's available spots to renew applicants.
And we also, I think one of the biggest changes was who's, the order of who's going to get the, or is that in the ordinance?
No, that's in the policies. And I wasn't at the Park Board, but that was a, I understand there was discussion on that, and they changed that.
Yes, there was discussion.
I'm trying to find it. It's Hudson School District.
It's under.
First page? Okay, yeah. So.
Priority number four.
Yep. Is first city residents, school district second, St. Croix County third, Washington County fourth, and then all others.
Yeah, I think.
Really, what happened there is St. Croix and Washington got flip-flopped.
Yep.
That's the change.
All right.
So we need a motion?
Yes.
Procedures?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, we're going to take the school next, if that's okay, and then we'll do the website after that. So Friday, the, what day was that, that we met?
The 12th.
The 12th. It was Devon and I, Rich, Vanslo, Denny, and Tim Caruso from the water utility met, and we met with Tom Holland and Mary Bowen Engabrotton and Tim Erickson. And we talked about the possibility of extending water and sewer out to the UU land. And one of the things that they talked about is this, are we interested? And if we're not interested, we can end the discussion really quick. And I said, I can't speak for the council. So you received all the information in your packet about some of the issues that we've got. You have, you had received the minutes from the meeting, and Tom Holland is here from the school district, president of school board, that wants to say a few things to us first, and then we can get into our discussion. Tom?
I appreciate that, Mayor Virchill. Just wanted to restate, and I appreciate the summary, just restate our position and the requests that we're asking for. For those council members that possibly weren't there at that meeting that you referred to, we're looking at other options currently for a secondary space for learning that affect potentially grade six through 12. We're looking at five options now that range as potential school sites that could be of populations of anywhere from 700 to 2,500 students. We obviously have one piece of land property that the school district currently owns on UU, and would like to look at that as what the feasibility of that is in terms of capacity for any school that might be placed on that. We've always known that there's a, there's the ability to put a school on that site, but the size of the school's been limited based on our, our understanding of a requirement to put a wastewater treatment on the site, so it would have been limited to that lowest level of about 700 students. So, we're asking the, you as the city council, if you would be willing to consider the possibilities of putting or extending city water and sewer out to that site in some form or capacity, some form or way, through annexation or through a special water district. I certainly don't know the ins and outs of that, and don't understand what the possibilities are, but we'd like to work with you, we'd like to ask you to, if you'd work with us on the feasibility study to determine what is possible, what is, and what would the cost be and so forth. It doesn't mean that we're asking you to approve or guarantee anything, we're just asking if you'd be willing to be open to helping us work with us towards a solution, towards this end. The cost of that would obviously be, is soon be borne by the district, the school district, and we would have to go through our own, our own steps to approve that as well as a board, but that's, that's virtually what we're asking tonight, is just asking if you're willing to, to work with us on looking at the possibility of extending city water and sewer to that UU site, because for us, that'll give us a better understanding of what capacities, options are available to us as we do our research, so. Okay? And we're available for questions and.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Holland right now?
I just want to say thanks, Tom, for, you know, including us in the early discussion of this, and I would be in favor of exploring that opportunity.
Okay. Denny, do you want to say anything at this point? Denny had put the, some of the issue sheets together for our previous meeting, and.
I don't see any questions on the information I put together. My only concern would be is that there are current ordinances, there are current policies that address extensions of sanitary sewer and water. If the city's going to consider the cooperation, I think it should be understood, and it's with the caveat that the city, you know, has to work through those policies and ordinances to make it work. I mean, it's just not simply throwing all of our policies and ordinances out the window and saying, you know, we're going to do this. There's also the technical feasibility of doing it, whether, you know, technically, and which partly the concern is, what's the cost of doing it? So, I don't see any concern in working cooperative with the school district, but I think the city should make it very clear that there may be issues that simply says at some future time, we may have to say, no, we can no, we can no longer extend the cooperation because it here doesn't meet our policies and guidelines. We have to get a project like that approved through the St. Croix County Planning Office because we're impacted and regulated by the Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan. That's required by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. We have to comply with that. If the compliance cannot be met, then the Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan potentially could be a neck, or not a necks, but modified, so those, you know, that'd be a whole completely different process. So there's a number of things that have to be considered by the city in the cooperation of working with the school district. So all I'm saying is, you know, I don't see a concern about cooperating at this time, but again, certainly there may be things that need to be considered by the city that may, you know, not allow it to move ahead once the, we get into the review. I guess their question would be, who's going to do the feasibility study?
Okay. Yes, Laurie?
You know, I would definitely be in favor of going ahead with the feasibility study with the understanding that the school district is bearing the cost, simply because the district is larger than just the City of Hudson. I'm wondering, Denny, though, are there any questions that we can answer before, you know, before money's spent on a feasibility study? Is there any way we can get some of those answers, so whether or not?
One of my first suggestions would be is that we should get a letter from the school district asking for an extension of sanitary sewer and water. Secondly, there should be, you know, that letter should be sent to the St. Croix County Planning Department now known as the Community Development Department. You know, ask them to review where this is compliant, this type of request is compliant with the Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan. We should get that answered as quickly as possible. Other than that, those, you know, that'd be the first two things I think we can move ahead after, after getting that, go ahead on a Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan. It is within the area, it's, my question is, does it meet all the policy considerations within the plan itself?
And that's a St. Croix County issue?
Well, it's a, it's a Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan.
Yep.
The DNR requires the county to be the review agency.
Okay.
Not the City of Hudson, we can't review our own plans.
Okay.
So the county's responsible for doing that.
So the biggest red tape is the county?
Well, it doesn't.
It's, it's compliance with the Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan. The county's only the review agency.
Yep.
It looks like there's a capacity issue here, too, that we might run into. Is that correct?
Well, the capacity issue's from the wastewater treatment plant is how much capacity would this potentially use? How much of the capacity do we, you know, I mean, we have property with, in the City of Hudson that is going to use lies, you know, we've reviewed this wastewater treatment plant capacity issue a number of times. I guess the question, and I've said it, if I said it once, I've said it a dozen times, it's not an issue right now that if we use certain capacity, that we're not going to be able to serve development within the City of Hudson. However, if we're going to start using capacity outside the City of Hudson, we need to evaluate that very closely, and then we may have to start making a determination where to expand the wastewater treatment plant. If we need to expand the wastewater treatment plant capacity, then that's a three-year process from the time we say engineers go ahead, do the design, until we go out for bids, build, construct the capacity so it's available, and then, so it's a three-year process. So the concern for the city is the period of time from the time we say, what, how much development's going to occur that's going to require that capacity. That's what the City of Hudson has to be very careful about.
What's our current capacity, Denny? Roughly?
Well, right now, it's, I think it's 2.2 million. We can expand it to 2.6 million now.
Per day, right?
Per day, correct. Gallons per day.
Yeah.
The question is, if we would need to go over 2.6 million in our consideration, we, a few years ago, we went to the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources, were able to obtain staying at the same treatment levels that we're currently under to expand up to 2.6 million gallons per day. If we go over that, we're opening ourselves up to a whole different set of criteria for treatment, and that's because our discharge goes into the St. Croix River.
Okay. Any other questions for Denny?
Well, I don't want to get the cart before the horse, but if we were to go down this road, would you, could you ever envision something whereby, because we'd be serving an area outside of the city, that we'd be compensated for future expansion of the treatment plant differently than, you know, if we were serving just the city? Does that make sense?
Well, I, I mean, typically, if you would allow somebody to hook up, you're going to collect sufficient funds that, that, that demand, that goes into our fund. It'd be the same thing as our sewer connection funds that you talked about for allowing the liquor license considerations. So that would go into the fund, they've paid into it, so they'd be allowed the use of that. I guess the question is, you know, one of my notes was, will the town of Hudson allow an extension of sanitary sewer and water into the town of Hudson? That also has to be answered. If they say no, I don't think we have any right to extend into another area that currently is not served by the City of Hudson. Currently, the two parties involved in the sewer and water system is the Village of North Hudson and the City of Hudson, no other jurisdictions.
The other thing is, we do have ordinances now that prohibit the city from extending water.
Water.
And just water.
Water.
Outside the city limits. And so those would need to be looked at, the reasons for them, and I think one main reason for them is to encourage annexation rather than just extending service out to non-city properties. So I think you'd want to look at, okay, why do we have that ordinance? What ramifications if we change it? And I do believe there's statutory authority for entering into agreements on providing water and other utility services outside the city limits, and maybe some of these questions could be answered in those agreements, but you'd want to look at, is it going to have ramifications other than with respect to this one request?
Are there, I'm sorry, Rich, are there exceptions for schools, or is that a unique case, or it's just no matter?
Well, I guess one would be, no, under the Hudson Area Sewer Service Plan, there's no specific exemption. I guess if the city's looking at modifying policy, modifying ordinance considerations, is this a type of exemption that the city would find reasonable, but are you going to open, all of a sudden you open extending sanitary sewer and water to areas of the town of Hudson that currently don't have it? If you extend it out there, are they going to have a right to connect to our sewer service, sewer service and water service? And were there a party to our cooperative agreement for those types of services? I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Yeah, that's what needs to be looked at, is what, what kind of doors are we opening?
We've, we've been looking for opportunities to cooperate with other taxing bodies so we can effectively use tax dollars that are collected into those bodies, and I think this is just an ideal situation for us to cooperate with the school district on providing an effective solution to the crowding in schools, and also possibly and potentially at a low-cost solution. I'd be more than willing to start a feasibility study and see if we can get through this with them, because I think it is, it is a good way to cooperate together here.
And I think that's the reason what was brought to you folks today, not to approve anything other than the willingness to look at it. Because I don't believe we're ready to make any kind of a commitment to say, yes, we're going to do that, because there's a lot of unanswered questions. And whether, and I think the school district has lots of unanswered questions, whether it makes any sense for them. I mean, we don't know the cost and whether it's physically, I'm sure they can build it, but at what cost?
And we're both trying to build a better community.
Yep.
So I think this is an ideal, ideal situation.
I agree with Rich. I think it's ideal, and I think it's probably a wise move to get some of these questions answered before the school actually pays, the district actually pays for a feasibility study, because if we are going to meet those barriers, and we, if we have no control over those barriers, then it just, you know, it's just going to be a waste of money. But I think if we can somehow figure out how to get through all those barriers, I think it's a great opportunity.
I'll move to approve the, moving forward with the feasibility study.
Well, well, I think, I'm not sure we wanted, you go ahead and make the motion if you want, but I don't think we're going to pay for a feasibility study.
No. It's my understanding that the school district, I thought Tom said the school district was going to pay for the feasibility study. Our understanding would be the school district would have that obligation, we'd want to consider the cost, and that's an action that the school board would have to take officially, so.
Yep.
So it's, it's.
Okay.
I'm, I'm making that motion with the understanding that the school district is in agreement to pay for the feasibility study.
Would you want to preface that with a, that we receive a letter from them requesting that, as Denny suggested?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, all right. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
May I just comment?
Yep.
Do we want to get a cost estimate so the school district knows what their financial obligations may be before we
Sure.
Move ahead also? And you want the city engineer to provide that cost estimate?
Or the water, or the waters. Waters, yep.
May I make a, it seems like we have some legal issues and procedural-type issues to resolve first, at least to find out what some of the framework for doing this and what the obligations might be if the city does extend, just how it can be done, so rather than going into technical-type stuff, should we work on resolving, getting answers to those questions first?
I don't disagree with that, but it's got to, it's got to come down to how much does the feasibility cost? I think if nothing else, we can get a ballpark figure from the city engineers on what they think the possibility of the cost is, just to do a feasibility study.
And once the letter's received, Denny could go ahead and, or whoever, Denny or Jim Schreiber with the sewer district at the county, and get that process going, because without that, it's not going to happen.
Right.
Can't the motion be contingent upon that stuff so that the school district does not have to come back to us again, so we can revisit the discussion, to just tell them again that we agree with them having taken this chance?
Can't it be part of the feasibility? I mean, the cost is part of.
Oh, sure.
The cost is part of the feasibility, so.
It's low government.
Rich, is your intent to formally notify the school district that we're in favor of moving forward with exploration of the process?
Yes.
Because it seems just really too early to put a formal motion from us, unless it's just a gentleman's agreement, I don't know.
Well, I just want people to know we're serious about it.
Yeah.
Okay? I mean, I don't want to get into this and then have people have misconceptions about how serious the city is about it.
Yeah.
And if they're going to spend money, I think they need some assurance from the city that we're serious about this.
I agree.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go spend I wouldn't, I wouldn't go spend money on a shake of a hand. I, I would want some assurance that you, you, this body is serious.
Is that what you're looking for, Tom? Are you looking for some formal affirmation on it?
That's, I'd be our preference, yeah.
And, and I don't think that's a problem in my mind, because there, there are a lot of unanswered questions, and any number of them could stop the whole program. But my proposal is that we need to look at this, and if we find a barrier, we find a barrier. But until we look at it, we don't know.
Okay. There, there was a second, John, you seconded. Any other discussion?
So, is it going to be contingent upon all that, then?
You want to read it back, what you have?
To approve moving forward with a feasibility study at the school district's expense, and receipt of a letter from the school district stating specifically what they're asking for from the city.
Okay.
I don't have any other contingencies noted.
I just have one last question. So, the city, or, I'm sorry, UU can handle a 700-student school now if, but you would have to put water, your own wastewater treatment at the site, is that correct?
You know, when we first looked at the UU site, we have a, we have, it's 110 acres total. About 25 acres of it, we thought was actually usable for a school site, which limits it to, according to the council that we've gotten, is to about 700 students. And that's, that was a rough guess. But, so, our intention was with the, the previous plan was to have a 20, 2,000 to 2,500 student, and, and that was, that required a wastewater treatment system, which really removed that as an option for us, because of the cost and because of the capacities, things like that, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Seems clear. Comments?
I'll, I'll support the motion, but I just think we're really going really too. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions.
Well, I agree, Randy, yeah.
I don't know why we would need, I understand your point, but.
I just don't want to sit here a month from now and say, okay, let's do this again. If it's contingent upon all the unanswered questions.
It's a big decision.
Well, yeah, but.
That's what we're paid to do, if that's what you want.
Well, I think we kind of went through it for like a year, it felt like, already, with all the questions we've had and everything we've discussed and researched.
But what is contingent upon it? That's my question.
Contingent upon town, contingent upon legal, contingent upon the water.
But, but are we, is our, giving our blessing of a feasibility study contingent on that?
No, that's their choice if they want to spend money on a feasibility study. But if the feasibility study goes through with flying colors, in my opinion, then if everything, if everything works how we would, how they would like it to work, you know, which is probably going to be, you know.
Right.
Difficult, but if it does, then yes.
And this is just one option that you're looking at, correct, Tom? I mean, yeah.
Right, right. I mean, there are other options. This is, you know, because we own the land, this is, our first looks at this option.
Sure.
We'd like to get that resolved, in terms of understanding capacity, so.
I just don't want them to come, have to have, come back again and say, okay, we did the feasibility study, do we have your blessing? Everything is going well, do we have your blessing?
No, I, I understand. I, I, I just wonder if the motion is.
Premature.
Possibly, yeah. Because I think we're saying, or the motion says, we're in favor of you doing a feasibility study, and then we're throwing on there, contingent on this, and that, and this. Well, our, our approval of the feasibility going ahead isn't contingent on it. The project, obviously, is contingent on it. But the way it's worded is, we're saying the feasibility, or, our being in favor of the feasibility being done, is contingent on.
Wasn't any contingencies.
I think you're using the term feasibility study to mean continuing, exploring all the issues that Denny has identified and that have come out in this discussion. Legal, procedural, ramifications of changing policies, and also just physical capability. So, it's not.
Specific to just the physical.
Right.
Getting the water sewer out to the site.
And the real contingency would be the letter from the school district, asking us to proceed, and the fact that they will be willing to pay for the feasibility study.
Right.
And those two make sense.
Yeah, those are, those are the two contingencies.
But we have a municipal code right now, that everybody's aware of, in the middle of the, middle of the page.
Right.
That says, we do not extend sewer and water.
I second it, because I'm viewing this as, we're looking at the technical capability of, can we run water and sewer out there? What's its impact on our wastewater treatment? And, you know, what would it cost, and what kind of school would it support? At, at that point, we at least have an idea of, then the school district will know, hey, this is an option that can do this. I mean, that, right? Isn't that what we're kind of saying here?
But let's assume, not to keep the ball rolling here, but let's assume everything fits. We still have to go back and amend our municipal code. Now, we get into all the other issues that, that come up about, you know, what does that mean? Does it mean that anybody that wants to come in? Or is it school-specific? Can we write something?
Can we limit it to them? That's the question.
Can we legally limit to say, we're only going to allow one per, because it's not our intention, I don't believe, that we want to extend water out to non-annexed property and extend sewer and water to them. I just don't think that's in the best interest of the city.
And I would agree.
That's why I requested that part of contingency be legal.
Right. Okay.
I want to make sure that legally, I have no problem extending it out for a school, but I'm not going to start extending it out for a big box.
Big box store, restaurants, or.
Yeah, I think we need to make sure that, not only is that option maybe not even there, but it doesn't obligate us to do it.
Right, right.
And that's illegal in there.
So, it's not just the tech, to me, you want to find out what this, what effect it may have on the city.
Right.
I think.
One may be.
Because you may not want to change that policy, even if all the mechanics work to get water out there.
Which should be all part of the feasibility study.
That's why I say you're using feasibility to mean more than just, will a system go out there?
But can't the city, can't we get that research done before the district spends money on a feasibility study? Can't we look at our municipal code and find out if it's going to con, obligate us to open it up to other options?
Well, I would, I guess I would take your motion as directing further, yeah, research on that.
Yeah.
But I don't think the school district wants to do an actual feasibility study until you've identified this option.
That's absolutely right. We'd, we'd like to know that there aren't any immediate barriers that would, you know, prohibit you from being able to move forward with whatever the feasibility, the feasibility in terms of the extension of the water sewer would result in. So, yeah. So, we would need to wait until you're, you feel like you can answer that question fully, I think, so.
Okay.
I just feel like the feasible, the word feasibility is technical, as far as the mechanical apparatus, can it happen? I think there's so many other red tape, I guess.
Right, that's the go, no-go, because if it's not technically feasible, or it's $10 million, well, probably not going to consider that a real option, then why jump through, we won't have to jump through any other legal hoops, or.
Yep.
I mean, so, I guess that's kind of the way I see it.
Okay. Folks, ready to, you feel comfortable?
Well, so, at this point, is it the school district deciding, we want this legal question answered, we want this technical question answered? I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I just think it needs to be a little more clear than it is right now. Who's sort of driving it? Who's?
Well, I guess the question is, I think that you want to know, is who's going to pay for some of these preliminary, maybe preliminary issues, the legal and so forth? And if that's part of the feasibility study, then the school district would pay for it.
Well, let's, let's.
That's what you need to hammer out.
Yeah, let's get the school district to decide whether or not they're going to send us a letter that says, we want you to, to look for that, because I don't think we've received it. That first letter that we got from you, Tom, I think was to sit down and talk about it. So.
No. I understand the need for the second letter, and, and also understand that this is, this is getting, this is getting preliminary information for you to really kind of answer the question.
Sure.
Whether or not you can, we can move, you can move forward with it, therefore, we can move forward with it.
Yeah, and if you, you may not have any interest in it, right?
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Is that clear as mud for everyone now?
Spot on.
Okay. Do you have any other questions that you'd like to ask? Okay? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, presentation, New City Hudson webpage. Mike, is that you, or is it?
I'll, I'll maybe do a little introduction here while Mike and Brian get set up. Week before last, we, about eight of us, seven, eight of us took a full-week training on the new webpage, how to design, how to make certain things happen. Mike's going to go through some of the things that we've already created, so that you have an idea what it's going to look like. It'll be phased in, as modules are ready to go. We're not going to throw everything out there if it's not ready. We have that ability to hide things until they're ready to go. There'll be limitations on who can access certain aspects of the website, so that agendas and minutes, anybody that's authorized can go in and make changes, add things. There'll be a few people authorized to do alerts, so if there's a storm alert, a get-your-car-off-the-street alert, because it's snowing, those type of things. Everything else, once the page is set up, there'll be restrictions put on, so certain people will be able to author things. However, everything will have to go approval through me. And I know that sounds a little dictatorial, but the concern is that someone puts something out there on a map page that I don't look at on a regular basis. So, they'll send it to me, I'm sure everything will get approved, but it's just that one last step to make sure that everything's going on the website is what we want out there. And then, after we're done, we've got a couple of questions for you, as to what you want us to put on the site, as far as community-type things, so.
Okay. I'm going to start out with a general overview of what the website is, and Brian will walk through the individual parts. The intent was this, was to have a modern website that was interactive, that would allow citizens to have the ability to reach out and touch every part of the government that they had a reason to interact with, that was visually attractive, that would allow for us to maintain it. As Devin said, there were eight people trained last week. We will be training about four more coming up. So, the input, if the public works department needs to change something, they have a designated person, they can change it right on the spot. This is the homepage, so, we can't get it all up here, but I'll start at the top. The background, the lake and the boats in the far background, we have the ability to change that, but for right now, that's set up as the background for our site. The slideshow in front, obviously, most of these are fall pictures I took last fall. We have been visiting with different community businesses, photographers, and will have a rotating slideshow. We can specify if it's the hot air fair and we want pictures of that, we can do that. So, we can change that, excuse me, internally. There is a connection, if you look right down here, this will connect to a new City of Hudson Facebook page and Twitter account. And certain items from here will automatically push to those accounts, alerts, news, and we can change those. But right now, it will be community events, the spotlight, news, that type of thing. This is a work in progress. Not all of the links that Brian will show you are completed yet. We're scheduled to go live the second week of May. There's been a lot of work put into it, but there's a lot more needed. So, we can connect, we have our video tour book. You can see right here, it looks a little different, but it takes you to the videos that we had on there. Notification signup. You can go in and basically select anything you want to be notified of. If you want to know and have sent to you the city council agendas, you can go in and sign up, and you can designate whether you want it as a text or an email. And whenever an agenda is changed, you will get an email or a text saying, the agenda for this date has been changed. Then you can go and download the agenda, download attachments from it. Basically, every part of this is available to get notification on, if you want amber alerts, if you want snow events. You go through and you decide. Online payments, this is where the water bills can be paid. And right now, we have our court, you can pay that online through the service they use, and the parking, we will have those linked also. And this can be expanded to whatever we choose. My dashboard allows citizens to customize it. So, if I'm a citizen and I say, that's really nice, but I don't care about anything but parks and police. You can, in effect, customize what you see. And when you log into it, all the citizens will be able to log into it, they can pick and choose the main things they want to see. The city news, these are just samples. So, as we put calendar events and news events, it'll highlight, we've chosen three, and then if you click view all, it'll show you all of them. The events calendar is the same, it will show you a list of what's going on. In the spotlight, will allow us to highlight upcoming events, highlight whatever we choose to. And we can put pictures in, we can put videos in, we can put slideshows in there. On the left side, you have Hudson Quick Facts. This is completely customizable, what items show up here. So, the quick facts, let's refresh it there. Okay, the quick facts, did you fill that out, Devin? Okay. Well. We'll find out. We'll find out. Basically, that's just an overview. Let's see if the agendas and minutes work. Okay. Brian, we'll have to refresh our web here. Bid postings, you can sign up, if you are a contractor, if you are a business, when we post bids, you can sign up in advance to receive bids that are in any number of areas. If it's for roads, if it's for services, if it's for gasoline, and when we post a bid, those people are automatically notified. Why don't you go back just a second here? Let me just finish this. The employment is employment opportunities with the city, but it's also employment, well, Brian will talk about that a little bit more. There's a lot here that we aren't using right now, and Devin has questions for you on what we're going to use there. And then, the public notices, that's, again, to post anything that we would post as a public notice, you can sign up to receive those. One other thing, I'm not going to do it, but this is translatable into about 40 different languages. And I've tried it, to Spanish it works well, that's the only language I speak other than English, so I don't know how well it works to, to other ones.
And it'll automatically adjust to your cell phone?
Yes, there's a mobile version.
You know, it'll fit on, so that you're not having to put back and forth on that.
There, there is a, there is a mobile version of this, it works on Android and iOS cellphones and, or iPads. And it, it strips the graphics out, it formats it, so if you want to go to the employee directory, you can go there. It, it makes it look very usable. You don't have to look at this little tiny screen and try and zoom in. It's designed for smartphones and pad devices. There is a, which you won't see in here, it's called the Citizen Request Tracker, and that's an app that you can download. And if you come across a tree down, or a pothole, or anything like that, you take your phone, you can take a picture of it, it geotags it, and there's a workflow set up, so if it says pothole, it'll automatically go to whoever Public Works designate, if it goes to. And, and it'll, you can, will be followed up on. So, if you submit that, you'll get an email back, thank you, we received it, and when it's fixed, you'll get an email back also.
And we did check with the liability insurance on that, you know, once we're notified and all that, and.
Maybe it's not so cool.
Well, he gave us some language that we'll have to put in there, just to say, you know, we'll, basically, we'll get to it as quickly as we can, but, so we're not opening ourselves up that, as soon as someone reports that pothole, that the next person that hits it, we're opening it up for liability, so.
So, what about the aspect that they're going to get a notification once it's been complete? Whose, whose job is it now to track whose?
It'll, it'll all be part of the process, whatever department that is, once it, once it, if it's Paddle, for example, once Deb's notifies that it's fixed, then I assume she'll hit, hit something on the, in the practice system.
Well, and actually, she doesn't even need to do, there's a workflow built in, so let's use pothole for the example, if it, it might go direct to Chuck Perlock. If, after 24 hours. If after twenty-four hours, Chuck hasn't responded back, and he would respond as soon as he fixes it, there's a work order there, it automatically goes back, so the system sends those out. The workflow says if it's not done in twenty-four hours, or forty-eight, or whatever we choose, it will get pushed up to Tom Zulley, or however we wanna do it. So, the system handles all of that. The emails are generated automatically, and the acknowledgement, when you send something in, is generated and comes right back to you. When the work order is closed, it comes back to you. You can do this anonymously, that's if you put who you are in there. If you wanna report funny smells coming out of your neighbor's house, you can report that, but you won't get feedback on it, it'll be anonymous. So, that's a feature, I know Neil in the city, he used to work, they had that, and they liked it a great deal. So, those are the main features, and if we can get to another page here, we'll, we'll see, let me just. Switch to our secure network. Just so you know, we have two wireless networks in here, one is for the public and one is a secure city hall network. So, so we have a TV that broke, and our TV's broken.
Get on that.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Getting a new one to replace would be a lot cheaper than the first one we bought.
I'm sure it will.
Because that's gotta be six years old, seven years old?
At least.
Is it here before you were here?
We'll upgrade this one to a fifty-five inch.
Forty-two inch?
That's a, I think that's a fifty, I think that's a forty-two.
What, just one other, well, go ahead, we'll talk about it afterwards.
Okay. So, let's, we'll start here with agendas and minutes. The great thing about the agenda module is a lot of people can submit items for the agenda, and whoever's in charge, I believe it's, is it Jan? Jan will get a notification and.
Not anymore.
Oh, that's true, she's leaving. Well, whoever's in charge of it will get a notification, Nancy, and can then approve it to be added to the agenda. We can create a template for the city council agenda, for the police and commission, police and fire commission agenda. It's, it's a great module, it helps us to go paperless, in a way, and people can, like Mike said, get emails for it.
And hopefully, then, the format of all the meetings will be the same, then, so that every committee and everyone will have the same format, so you're not always looking for different information in different spots.
And for whoever's completing it, it's all drag and drop, so if planning sends something in, they just drag that to where it goes, and it automatically makes the agenda.
Yeah. I'll let you drive this while I talk. The archive center, it allows us to store past agendas, people can look through and search those. We can store minutes and newsletters and other documents. And.
Do you need to pull it up, or?
So, that's from February eleventh, two thousand twelve. It allows the public greater access to past meeting minutes and things that have happened in the past. Easier for the city employees, so they don't, you know, get phone calls and asked, "Well, what happened on this date?"
And it'll also link to the videos.
Yes.
Once they're put out there.
Okay. Mike touched on, on the bid postings. Currently, we're, there is a blog module, but we've decided not to use it because we'll have a Facebook and Twitter pages, which kinda defeat the purpose, I think, of having a blog.
Plus monitoring.
Yeah.
Would be a challenge, so.
Well, and with the blog, you can turn comments on and off, if you wanted, but.
But still, someone has to.
Yeah, someone has to monitor, it's just extra work.
You're not gonna blog, Mary, is that what you're saying? You wanna touch on this one?
Okay, the boards, we have all of our boards here, and it will have the members their contact information, and we can also have a narrative, let's see, who has a narrative? Do you know, Devin, in there?
The joint, the library, most of them should, I think I have them in there. Any of them that have the narrative underneath there, you can kinda see, tells what they do.
So, the meetings, just an overview of what the board does. So, those are all in there, and there are, there are, pretty much all of them are filled in and ready to go.
I think I've done all of them, and we also put a staff contact, for example, so someone has something with Public Works, it has a committee, but then it also says, "This is who you contact if you have a concern for Public Works or for public safety," and that'd be an administrative person.
City holidays, it's a self-explanatory page, lets the citizens see which, which days were closed, so they don't drive up and see that the doors are locked and the lights are out. And then the common, the mayor and the common council pages.
We, I'm sorry, we can, if you wish, you can have bios in there.
Oh, God.
But you don't have to.
Yes.
But if that is something the council wishes to do, we can, what we would do is, we'd probably set a link off the picture, a link off your name to another page, and so it's something to think about. Don't have to, but. To answer your, excuse me, to answer your question, Randy, about the phone, Mike did say we do have, Mike, Randy had asked whether or not we could have a.
Mailbox.
Mailbox type.
Some of our cellphones are personal. Yeah, we have thirty mailboxes available yet, so it wouldn't ring to a phone, it would just go right to that mailbox, and you could pick up the mailbox. Yeah, instead of using our own cellphones or personal home phones.
Yeah, there's an option, so.
Those are available.
You'd have court, just coordinated through Mike.
We have maps of the districts.
Okay. I know this one's helpful for me, because I never remember what district I'm in, every time I come in to vote, I have to find out. Hopefully, more, more citizens will start using this. And we do, we, there's talks to get this out to the public, haven't finalized exactly how we're gonna present it to the public and let them know that we have a new, a new website.
We had thought about possibly having kind of an open meeting thing here a couple times, and if people wanted to come and, you know, once it's all set up, have them, show them what, where everything is and how to do the things.
The, I've talked to Nate, the developer has a video available, and he's agreed to play that on the public channel also. Of course, none of the maps are coming up here. These are the same maps we've used before, why don't we just go on to?
Well, yeah, they're big, that's probably why they're not loading that fast.
So, each department has their page.
So, is the fire department and the police department still gonna have their own, or are they gonna be integrated into this one?
The police department will be integrated, the fire department.
Will have their own.
Will still have their own, and.
EMS will have their own, the library, but we still have them in here, and if you click on the library.
It's a direct link.
So, it brings open a new tab, that way, the city webpage is still there, so it's easily navigatable back.
Why does EMS and fire have their own website?
Well, EMS, I think, is used a lot for.
Well, that can be a, that can be a decision that the council can make.
Yeah. Well, just seems like, why would we not put them all on one?
We can also do a direct link, so if they wanna maintain it there, like we do with the library.
Well, my point is, if somebody's gotta maintain that website, wouldn't it be better to have it in one location with under one system?
The advantages to that, right now, their websites, they have to go back to the developer to change and update.
Right.
This has a module that lets you do it with a minimal amount of training, then you can do a great deal, you can make new pages, you can put pictures in, you can basically do anything you want on here.
We can have that discussion with EMS and fire. With cable and library, because they're quasi-independent, we just felt a direct link to them.
That's easier, but.
Yeah, and the library, their site is hosted by the IFLIS organization, and.
And they are a separate entity.
And all of their functionality for checking out books and everything is on there.
Yep, that's not a problem, but the other two are city.
Okay.
Here's an example for the building inspector. You see, you have the contact information here for David Gray and Liz Moline. Quick links is just a, I mean, this can be on every, every page, it's a quick link to the most common inquiry.
We, we have a, how, an FAQ section.
That can go right here as well.
If they have those in there, once you open the.
Utility billing hasn't, I know.
Yeah.
And the plan at some point, eventually, will be to get all the forms on the building inspector page, so that they can go to that page. The forms will be there, and we're also planning on creating fill-in forms that you can submit online, so they don't even, it wouldn't be a printout and sent, you know.
Yeah. So, e, each page, depending on the page, can have an FAQ, a frequently asked question that's related to that department and that webpage specifically. And then there's also, also a generalized frequently asked questions page.
Why don't you go up to the top to the, how do I?
So, how do I, I mean, that's where the citizens are gonna go for their basic questions.
How do I set up utility service? How do I get a building permit? How do I register to vote? That has to be tweaked yet, we haven't.
Dog and cat license and all that. Or apply for a job.
So, if they don't know what department, they, they will have the general questions here.
And there's also a, a search feature up here in the top right, if they're still not finding it for some reason. So, any page that has the word "cat" in it will come up, and they, they can look for it if they're looking for something about cats.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Questions about like garbage pickup or recycling, will they give them a link to Veolia?
It would probably take them to the Public Works page, which would probably have the link there.
Yes.
And everything in here, all documents, every word in this site, including archives, is searchable.
So, then, here we have the elections page. I don't know if Nancy wants to say anything about that, but.
We haven't, haven't done there yet.
Results by nine-thirty?
Well, what we'll probably do is, we'll probably put a link on there.
To the county.
To the county, because the county, you know, has a report, and we can put a link to that, direct link to their election.
Special spot for the mayor under government, little bio with, and a picture.
Nice.
Yeah, I put in what I knew, so if you don't like it, you gotta give me more stuff.
Nice picture.
What about, like, other content ideas? At one point, we talked about, what was it, garage sales or things like that?
We, we have, there is a module for that, and that's one of the questions.
Brian, why don't you slide over to community, which is over, I don't know if they can see it or not, or.
Who inputs all this stuff?
People.
If it's a garage sale, you let, if it's a business or somebody outside the city, there's a form they fill in, they can submit it, and it gets approved, and it goes on. So, we, anything, if, if we wanted to list all the restaurants, the restaurants would have to come in, fill out this form, they can only put a certain number of things, they're all formatted the same, sorted alphabetically, they submit it, and Devin would approve.
So, that's our, that's our question. There, on, it's hidden right now, but under either Visitors, I think it is, where to eat and where to stay, we hid those. The question is, do we want to get into the business, quote unquote?
Isn't that the chambers business?
There is a liquor and a chamber, and that's what we wanted to know, because we, if we're gonna allow things other than city, we, we want guidelines, because we don't want someone putting something on there and then having.
The challenge with the chamber is if you're not a chamber member, you're not listed. So, if you go to churches, there are six churches in Hudson listed.
And that's the incentive to join the chamber.
But, you know what, I don't, I don't think.
You go to garage sales, and you're gonna have a fight over my. Yeah. Right, right now, it's not listed. You could, we can list under jobs, we can open that up for employers to list, and we have it.
And we are, I said no to that.
You know, it's just that, then we're in the business of, I just think we should stick to the City of Hudson's business, and.
Well, it's, it's like Randy said, I mean, really, at that point, we're competing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With the newspapers, so.
And the other question revolves is events, and we don't have to decide this tonight, but we're gonna have to have a policy or some guidance from the council on what's considered an event to go under our events. Is it events in the city, well, okay, does that include the Sunday morning breakfast? Does it include, or is it just city-approved events, city?
That's what I, I don't even know why we'd have to yet discuss this, there should be city-approved, whatever.
Well, the issue that comes in is one of the things we had for the banner, remember, that's the.
Yep.
Community-sponsored events to put the banner up.
Right.
So, maybe those are the only ones, like the fireman's pancake breakfast, and the booster days, booster days.
What about all the races? What about?
Hot air fair.
Hot air fair. Anything that you approve as either as a.
Don't we pay, give hot air fair money, so that would be considered a city-type event?
But the issue comes in, we've approved twenty races this year.
You're not gonna put those on.
Are we gonna be responsible for making sure we have all that input in?
No.
And then if we got the wrong time.
Yeah.
Maybe what I'll do, then, is I will put together kind of a guideline and, and get it to you.
We're not.
Yep. Right. Okay.
Right.
Sorry.
Is that, is that okay with everybody? Because I think we're opening ourselves up to a.
We're not advertisers.
We don't have a dog in the fight, we, I mean, I'm just telling you, it, it is.
Has those capabilities.
Able to do a great deal, we're, right now, we've narrowed it down, about the only thing we're not implementing yet that we will be is the facilities, and that's just gonna take time. So, if you wanna reserve a park.
Right.
There's links to the parks, but if you wanna reserve.
Thinking for the first and next year that we would do that.
Use employees, I mean, that's a problem.
So, Kurt, you wanna ask your question that you asked today?
Not really.
Okay.
No, what he's referring to is, on Star Tribune yesterday, I was reading, the City of Burnsville is pondering the idea of advertising on their website, and it was just kinda funny timing.
It is, I mean, it's, what do you think? You know, the, the issue comes in is, you know, any business in town could advertise, and, but I don't think we're into that, at least I don't think we should be.
Then you're opening up a public forum.
Sure.
And restricting your abilities to control what goes on and what can be.
Well, I think Burnsville is, it'll be interesting, I'm, I'm gonna follow it, because they're digging deep, but that's what they're finding.
Yeah, I would.
Do we limit it to Burnsville businesses?
There will be ads here, because the video tour book.
Yep.
Has ads, so if you click one of these, the City of Hudson.
Always has.
Yeah.
It's on there now.
It's gonna be links around here.
So, so if you click for the Hudson tour book, you will get ads.
We have it, we have to, we've got a contract through March of next year, is it, or sometime in two thousand fourteen?
It's, it's until the end of two thousand fourteen, I think.
That we have to.
But that's there already.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
So, who, we're contracted for this?
Yes.
They did it for free, and then we, in return for them putting this together for us, we were, were obligated through the end of two thousand fourteen to put it on whatever website we have.
So, this really, I mean, if, it's not, we're not set up to put any ads in here, and.
No.
But it has the capabilities, I mean, it has a lot of capability, we can, on those dropdown menus, we can put anything we want in it, we can add any page we want.
Less is more.
And the same thing with the chamber, for example, you pull, pull down, click on the chamber, it goes directly to the chamber's website.
The problem is that someone has to actually monitor this and keep doing this.
One more quick question, schools. Right now, it's a link to the Hudson School District, however, we have other schools in the city, and I just, any guidance on that? Do we list all the schools, or do we just put the Hudson School District?
Hudson School District, I can left them link out of there.
Well, private schools.
So, you have Trinity.
You have Trinity and St. Pass, basically.
Why don't you put them in?
I'm asking, that's.
Where is the schools tab? Could you?
It's right here under community, it's under Hudson School District.
Did you do another dropdown?
We could do whatever.
We could, yes.
Yes, what I would do, then, I would put schools, Hudson School District.
Public schools, Trinity.
Yep. That's fine, I just didn't wanna do it without asking or not do it, and.
There's schools within the city.
Okay. That's an easy, easy fix.
And I'm sure they have websites that.
Well, that's what I would do, is, the school district's a direct link.
Yep.
Yep. Okay.
Okay, so we also have a link under.
Yeah, you're just listing, I mean, then you would list any school.
Government and community for the municipal code.
Yeah, and that's a direct link, too. Wherever we could do a direct link and not have to do input on it, we.
You need to change this, Nick, though.
Yeah, you're not putting in any information or monitoring their closing.
The one under community, it doesn't open a new page.
Oh, I have to change, okay, got it.
I think you're just providing.
Quick side note. Other government units, we have area municipalities, St. Croix County and State of Wisconsin, those are all direct links to their web. are all direct links to their webpages.
Should we put in the town of St. Joe?
They are.
Okay.
They're in there already.
What's under State of Wisconsin?
That's a direct link to their website.
To the, get to the state's main page.
Yeah.
Okay. So subsites, if the, if Public Works wants to link to the DOT, we can do that too, but.
And we also could put in there District Represent, like Dean and Sheila, and, you know, if we wanted to.
Under Staff Directory, list by department. I believe, don't we have the ability to add a photo for each person?
Yes.
Yeah. So, I don't know if, I don't know if we want to do that, I think.
I know the Police Department, Melanie is planning.
The advantage to doing that, that other cities, if it's somebody that has contact with the public, if it's a water worker.
Yeah.
Because you can pull this up on your phone, if, if it's somebody that you would have contact with, you can see a photo of who that person would be.
They're coming to your house, and they want to come to your house, and you can say, okay, yeah.
Yep. Whereas, me and Mike, you know, you don't really want to see our ugly faces.
We have pictures of the Private Assessment Company. When they come around to do the assessments, we will put their pictures on the website, so that you can see that that's who should be coming in.
And as we, as you go through this and look at it, we can pretty much add whatever, and that's what we put on the front page too, is, if you'd like to see something on here, please let us know, and we'll see if we can.
Okay, anything else?
There's a lot more, if you want to write down, I can give you a link, and you can go to this, this isn't.
Maybe we should email them the link.
Okay, I'll email you the link, you can go and look it over. If you want to sign up for something, don't do it yet, because that links to our official site. So you can poke around in here and do whatever you'd like, as far as getting.
Okay.
There's still quite a bit of input to, you know, to get done, but we're getting.
It's awesome, really good stuff.
Good job.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Communications from the Mayor, and Recommendations. We have a resignation that you should be aware of, Mike Wallace has resigned as Part-Time Assistant Building Inspector and Assessor effective May thirteenth.
He hasn't worked for a while.
He hasn't worked for a while, but we, he was official. Then we have a proclamation for Arbor Day that needs to be read. Whereas, two thousand thirteen marks the hundred and forty-first anniversary of Arbor Day in the United States, and the hundred and thirtieth year of celebration by Wisconsin Communities. And trees are among Hudson's most beautiful natural resources, bespoke fine opportunities